This conference will now be recorded.
We shall do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone please remain standing, I'd like to ask Commissioner Waters if he would do an indication for us, please.
That's right. I'm just glad to have you here. Father, we thank you for this wonderful day. It's a fun day. We're thankful for allowing us to come here to be part of this community, to help, so we can move this community in a direction that it would need to go. For our faithful brethren, help us be the instruments to be the bearer of this community. Our faithful blessings, everyone to have a part, the staff, the best of the businesses as well. What they've done for us, what you're going to do in Jesus' name, you pray.
I'd also like to have a little silence at the moment and offer these condolences to Commissioner Martin and the passing of his mother, Phyllis Martin-Kane, and Edward, Captain Ed Grafton, who passed away recently. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. You may be seated at this time. I would like to ask anyone on the board if they have a conflict of interest, anything that's on the agenda tonight. And also a reminder to everyone in the room to please put your phones on silent or cut them off as I just did. If your phone has a mind of its own, like mine seems to, and so that way we don't see what everybody's individual phone answering services are all about. All right, first up is the adoption of the agenda. I would like to add one item to the agenda. We'll make it number sixteen, which is the subject of an ILA appointment. And with that addition, I have a motion to accept the agenda. Do I have a second? All in favor? Thank you. Next up is the consent agenda, the approval of the July twelve, two thousand twenty-one meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, next up are public comments. I want to move this microphone to the stand. First up is, please forgive me if I mispronounce your names, Nancy Gerganus.
She here, if you would, ma'am. Hello, how are y'all doing this? Fine. Very good. Um, I am bringing up the Sutton Drive, Star Hill flooding issue once again. I am the one that actually lives where the easement goes underneath the golf course. My house is built on a slab. I know that our Commissioner Sarah has cracks in her driveway. I've got cracks in my foundation from the water, from the sandy soil, whatever you want to call it. But it has been a problem for the last twenty years. I've been here since two thousand and three. I didn't really get adamant about it until I got disabled five years ago when I was in a wheelchair and, you know, the water came up and it went all the way down the road, you know, the whole, the whole end, Quail Neck, Fairway Lane, the end of Sutton Drive. There's forty-seven homeowners that are cut off whenever that happens. So it's not just the couple of homes that are in the flooding area. There are more houses that are being built, and the more houses that are being built, the more water runoff we have to deal with. This last rain we had, of course, the soil saturated, water tables are up, we've got water in our yards. We want to bring it back up to the board again before we have hurricanes coming in, because we know it's going to be a problem, you know, once again. And I know, I read y'all's documentation, and I see where y'all came back in February and came to an agreement. So the next step is to find out what we can do together as a town and residents to try to get this resolved, whether, you know, we have to go to Star Hill Golf, you know, together and confront them, or whether, I don't, I don't think it should be just left up to us homeowners. We are the collateral damage, because it is the town's easement and the drainage that goes underneath the golf course. So that's really all I have to say. I didn't have anything planned, so I'm sorry. Very informal.
Jeff Thomas.
Yes, you did, very good.
Thank you.
My name is Jeff Thomas, and I live at one twenty-one Sutton. I am new in the area. We moved down to follow the grandkids and my daughter. They scoped the area out. They loved it. We love it too. We love the town. We love the whole state, and there's nothing bad that I can say about it, except for a little issue we have. But it's, I'm not getting into logistics or anything like that, but talking to neighbors and people and things, they all say that there's some type of issue where one side's higher than the other, the other side's lower than the other, and the water is not flowing in the correct direction. I think a quick solution, if there happens to be a problem there, it looks like the the, the ground is settling, where the pipe, the drain pipe underneath the golf course is definitely settling, and you hate to see something happen. You have to see something, someone get hurt, golf cart falls in, so on, so forth. So my thought is, if you put a drain, put a street, a stream in, and then decide which way the water goes, this way, this way, then they can make some type of determination to see what happens and where it goes. And it's a beautiful golf course. It's a beautiful community, and sooner or later, something's going to happen. I mean, come hell or high water, it's gonna, it will flood again, and, and it's probably not the only area that it's happening in. But besides that, I think it does flood quite deep in front of my house, and there would be a concern if there was an emergency vehicle that tried to get through. I know the little boy across the street, he was there, and he was up to his hips, so it had to be at least close to two feet. I can't say I'm the healthiest person, but I hope I would never need an emergency vehicle come through at that time. I mean, otherwise, they need a hip booter, hip boots, or a canoe, but that's basically all I have to say. I just, I think something has to be done. I don't know which way, whether it be the golf course or the town in the, in the drain line there, but sooner or later, something's have to be done, so. That's all I have to say. Okay, thank you very much.
We're going to be working on a new system, so we want everybody online to be able to hear, and so we pass this speaker around if y'all are wondering what we're doing for online. All right, next up is the staff update.
All right, we got a couple of things we'll run through this evening. Just wanted to give everybody an update. You know, it's not, definitely not great news to pass along, but they have updated the outlook for the Atlantic hurricane season, so they're anticipating fifteen to twenty-one named storms, seven to ten hurricanes, and three to five major hurricanes. That was some information that came out on August fourth that I wanted to make sure that we brought to everybody's attention and got everybody thinking about that as the Atlantic hurricane season heats up. So this is kind of showing where we are in terms of the statistical height of hurricane season, which is usually on September tenth around that.
The fire graph, I guess.
Yeah, I didn't create it, National Weather Service, but it definitely gets attention, so. I think it does an effective job at capturing people's attention, so. But just, everybody have that in your minds, have your hurricane plan ready, have your supplies ready, your evacuation plan, just can't emphasize that enough. Also wanted to give a brief update that they have changed for severe thunderstorm mornings. They have different criteria that they're using. They're adding in the wording destructive to the storms that have an eighty mile per hour wind or greater. So that's something just to, to be mindful of. And then also, there are two areas out in the Atlantic right now that we're keeping an eye on. One of those areas, this was just the five P M. update, which was potential tropical cyclone six. Looks like it's headed into the Gulf, but definitely one that we want to keep a close eye on this time of year. So like I said, I just felt like it was timely as we go into August that we really remind everybody to have a plan in place, to have provisions in place, and to start being on the lookout and watching what's going on in the tropics. Tomorrow, we've got the Cape Carteret Night Out right in front of the Cape Carteret Police Department from five thirty to seven P M., so good opportunity to come out, grab a bite to eat, interact with the Cape Carteret Police Officers. I believe Western Carter Fire DMS will also be out there. I will have some activities for the kids. Good opportunity to come out and sign up for the Neighborhood Watch Program, so definitely encourage everybody to stop by and do that as well. If you've got questions for the police department or just want to get to know our officers, great opportunity to do that, so definitely encourage everybody to stop by. And also want to encourage everybody, if you've not had the opportunity to do so yet, to go to capecarteretplan.com and to take the land use plan survey. The land use plan is a critical document for the town. It's the vision for what the town could be in the future, so we're really looking for feedback on what kinds of businesses and development that the town residents would like to see. We have a relatively low participation rate so far. We'd really like to see that get up, so not just the folks who are here this evening or online. We definitely encourage y'all to reach out to your neighbors, spread the word of the community. It's pretty easy to remember, just capecarteretplan.com. This is down there towards the bottom. You click the survey, just a three to five minute survey. Great opportunity to provide feedback on what you see the town being in the next five, ten, fifteen years, so I definitely encourage everybody to do that. Want to recognize the Public Works Department. They've been hard at work putting up the fence. There's the Ferry Landing Park there. So that's making good progress there. Hopefully, we'll finish that out in the next couple of weeks. Also making good progress on the Pettifer Creek Launch Site, on the turn lane up there, so hopefully we can get that inspection done on the turn lane and get some asphalt down in the next couple of weeks as well and get that open, so. But those projects are making good progress, and that's all I have for staff updates. One other thing would just be the Manatee Boat Ramp Channel dredging project is progressing nicely, and hopefully they wrap that up in the next couple of weeks as well. But I know we've got Brian and Chief as well this evening. If they've got anything to add for the staff update, I'll hand it over to them.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, exactly. We're getting parts over there. We've got one on more density tests, we have DOT standards, and we can get some asphalt down on it. To get that parking lot in there, we should be able to pull with final touch on it. I know we talked about, you, Commissioner, can also get materials for the kayak storage plans we discussed last meeting. I got multiple drainage projects, multiple homeowners that I met, especially at this past rain event. We're just trying to let everybody know what's going on as far as drainage and everything. We did just hire new Public Works employees, really looking forward to getting them on their hands, staff, so.
Thank you. Chief?
I'd just like to encourage people to sign up for the Neighborhood Watch Program. We have a few. We'll have a sign up sheet tomorrow also, and also send out paperwork for the officers if someone calls in a suspicious video form person to ask that person if they would like to join Neighborhood Watch, so we'd love to have some more people sign up.
We have a sign up sheet here as well. We can pass that around if anybody wants to sign up.
Yeah, absolutely. Also, Chief, I want to let you know, I was in a Zoom meeting with the league this past week, and one of the guys I was, I was talking to from the league was a former police chief who was vacationing down here and got pulled by one of your officers. And he said it scared the bejebers out of his grandkids that were living in the car, but he wanted to compliment the officer that pulled him. He didn't say which one it was. He wanted to compliment, he said he was very professional, and he was in the wrong. He admitted it, but he said that he was very impressed with how it was handled by your department. Just want to let you know. Sorry, you don't get that very much these days, but I just wanted, wanted to throw that off to you, sir. Anything else from you, sir? Okay. All right, next up is the U D O fact finding presentation from Mr. Dave Fowler, sir. Just a second.
Absolutely. I promised the mayor I'd be very brief tonight. I know Heather hates that, she's dying to beat me, but not tonight, hopefully. I want to hit the high points of the U D O, the Unified Development Ordinance. I want to first of all thank the town commissioners for appointing the steering committee. It was a very useful endeavor, I think, and hopefully we came out with a good product. Also want to thank the staff for their help in that endeavor, too. I'd like to very quickly recognize the members of the steering committee, Chris Call, Courtney Barnhill, Charlie Evans, Susan Hall, Vaughn Branch, Bubba McLean, Mike Bishop, and Zach Steff. Also want to thank Summit, the Design and Engineering Service, Ann Darby, Eric Cervenowry, and Adam Hutchins for their professional work with us. Our steering committee was interested in the project. They were knowledgeable. They were cooperative. They contributed to the process. We met seven times. Most of the time, the consulting agencies were, were with us, a few times not. But they, all the meetings went very well. The most impressive thing about this committee was, to a person, they wanted what was best for Cape Carteret. And you all know by sitting on committees, that's a rarity, that everybody's united on any issue, but they certainly were, and they were a pleasure to work with. I would certainly recommend this committee to tackle the land use document in the future. I don't know how many, what your process is going to be with that, but all the members on that board, I think, deserve a shot at that if they are interested. The steering committee perceived itself as an advisory group through fact finding, and that's exactly the scope we tried to stay with. We talked to commissioners. We talked to citizens. We had lively conversations among ourselves, meetings and otherwise. We passed on to Summit as much as we could, given the limited time we had, and that was quite a bit of information to them, and they listened to it with great vigilance. We wanted to make the document user-friendly. We wanted to exclude acronyms, make it less wordy and more understandable for laypeople. Those of us in government who have used this document that we just hopefully got rid of know it was very cumbersome. And oftentimes, you'd read the document, and you wouldn't know what you've read, and you had to read it over again, only to find out it was contradictory in somewhere else. So hopefully, most of that has been taken care of. One thing everyone must realize is this is not the end of the U D O. This is the beginning of a work in progress. That's very important to realize, because we've kind of lost our way with the old ordinance document. It really wasn't as up to date as it should have been, and we were out of compliance in a number of places. I think the Planning Board made that, made that plan very clear the other night, that this is a work in progress and needs tweaking quite a bit, even though most of the document's in a complete form now. But as I said, you'll be hearing more about this, and many towns have to go through this process anyway, so it's just nothing to surprise anybody, hopefully. One idea that everybody agreed with was the need for an outside entity to be hired to electronically update our U D O in real time, especially, especially related to general statutes. Now, that's somewhat an expensive endeavor, but if you consider a lawsuit, because we are out of compliance, or we don't know what's in our own ordinances, that's going to be a very cheap price in the long run. So I would highly recommend this board to take that up in your next meeting, to get somebody involved in doing that. There's a number of companies out there that do that. And lastly, let me just say that as a town, our most important accomplishment, whether the Summit, the commissioners, the staff, or the steering committee, planning board, whatever, was that we, we brought into compliance our, our ordinance, U D O, as we're referring to it now, in compliance with General Statute one sixty D, and that's really what it was all about in the short time we had. We had to get that in compliance before July first. That has been done, and thanks to Summit, to their work at dotting the i's and crossing the t's. And this was completed in the right amount of time. We got it on board before July first, and so I hope that we've been operating under that July first update ever since. I'm sure we probably have. Now we know that our Planning Board, our Board of Adjustment, and our Board of Commissioners are all in sync with the General Assembly, and I think that's very important, because if you sit on one of these boards, particularly the Board of Adjustment, they've been very concerned about the, the ordinances in the past, because they just didn't know if they were singing on the same sheet of music that they should have been. When you adjudicate something that's the next step before the Superior Court, you want to make sure you're operating from the right set of ordinances and laws. So with that, I'm very proud to have served on that committee. I look forward to the land use part of it. I think it's going to be very interesting. A lot of issues that were not addressed, like a lot of water issues and things like that, will be addressed in the land use. The, I think we have the consultants with us for land use until January first, I believe that's correct. And the deadline to get that land use agreement in compliance is July first, two thousand and twenty-two. So we've got a year to take care of it almost. We had about four months to do U D O, which was not time enough, so let's make amends this time and get on board and start doing this ahead of time. Now, I'd be very glad to take any questions from, from any of the commissioners or the audience for that matter.
I'd just like to make a statement. Thank you, and, and the board, the time, that's what's great, that's. So I tend to admit that means possibly good, there was a lot of discussions. And I think some people came in there thinking we were going to hammer all this out. The job was that you stayed, you're here to frame the house, and now it's up to us to figure out how we want to get your direction and all of the.
And one reason I didn't get more high weeds tonight with it, between Susan and I, we did a lot of high weed problems, issues related to the old ordinance. It would, it would be a time-consuming thing, because there are a lot of things. And a lot of, some of the things that are left to do in the ordinance that we have now, some of it's just grammatical. Some of it's too wordy in places, some are somewhat contradictory with terms and, and which are minor things. And then there's a few places in there we're going to have to look at very closely, because in one place it says this, and another place it kind of says something else. So we need to certainly work those things out in the future. In our last meeting as a steering committee, I think we decided to not recommend anything, just give you the facts as we found it, at the same time, hope that the Board of Commissioners will continue the good work of the committee and help iron out some of these little things that could be big things if there were, you know, problems with citizens that didn't understand it. So with that, if there's no more questions, I'll. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks so much. And that's a great segue into the Planning Board, Dave, our Chair, Susan Hall.
Just leave that up there.
Good evening, everyone. The Planning Board met this last Tuesday, August third, and during that meeting, we adopted rules of procedure for the Planning Board. We're not required to do that by state statute or by our own ordinance for that matter, but I just thought it was a good idea to have rules of procedure. So as we start kind of handing off to other, you know, other members, that they, they have a good idea of what we've been doing and how to do it. At this last meeting, we also began our U D O review. So we, we distributed that final draft, went through it, you know, with a fine tooth comb. And, you know, there's, it was a lively discussion, like the, the mayor said. Everybody has their own idea about how these documents should look, so it's going to take us some time, the Planning Board, to really dig in and, and make some decisions about how we want that language to read. The goal of the Planning Board is to be a resource to this process and not a burden. We will begin meeting every two weeks until we get the U D O complete. And our next meeting will be on August seventeenth, and I believe, I believe we've already announced that. Have we, Heather? Didn't I see that somewhere? That will, and after that, we'll have a meeting every two weeks on, until the U D O is complete. Our goal at this point is to send the Planning Board endorsement to the Board of Commissioners by the September meeting. That's a goal. It doesn't, you know, it might be a little it might not be realistic. I think, I think I can say more about that after this next meeting to see, you know, kind of what our process is going to be. Before I go further, does anybody have any questions about what our review saw? No? Okay. So I'm, at our next meeting, our plan is to go ahead and have some special use permit training. Special use is kind of a new, a new thing that we're going to be seeing, and there's also a lot of new terminology that we're going to be seeing in the U D O that we didn't see in the Code of Ordinances. And I think it's important that, that we get something together so we really understand what all of these different things mean. Many of these are, they're named different things, and they all mean the same thing, you know, in, in our town. So we just, we want to do that, that training, kind of get in front of it. And also, next meeting, we will vote for a vice chair, and that's a result of what came out of their rules of procedure. Okay. Any questions? Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it, Barbara. Barbara's doing an awesome job. Both that and the. All right, into the agenda, the consideration of the chalk and its place.
Thank you, Chief.
It's a moment to get there.
It's okay.
All right, the current Chalk and Gibbs lease agreement for two oh four W B McLean Drive, Unit A expires on August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. The Chalk and Gibbs, Chalk and Gibbs has expressed a desire to continue leasing the premises for another four-year period commencing on September first, two thousand and twenty-one, and terminate, terminating on August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. The monthly rent amount for the lease is set at sixteen hundred per month. The proposed lease agreement contains the option to renew for one additional five-year period upon mutual agreement of both parties. The monthly rent amount for the additional five-year period would be seventeen hundred per month, and the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners. And the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider authorizing the town manager in consultation with the town attorney to enter into the proposed lease agreement for two oh four W B McLean Drive Unit A with Chalk and Gibbs Incorporated. And the attachments are the proposed lease lease agreement and attachment A is the proposed parking diagram for the lease.
Anybody have any questions for Zach about the lease? I'll entertain a motion. Second, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Thank you.
I think we're also we have to have a public hearing on it as well.
Right, so let's go. I'll entertain a motion to forgot about it here. My bad. Entertained a motion to go out of the regular meeting into a public hearing. A second. All in favor? All right, did we have anybody? We didn't have anybody.
Everybody signed up.
Signed up or anything, but is it while anybody's here? Anybody have any oppos- opposition to it or any comments regarding the issue? All right, if not, then I'll entertain a motion to go back into the regular meeting.
Move to go back.
Thank you. All in favor? All right, thank you. Do another vote?
Yeah, just another vote after the public hearing on the approval.
All right. All in favor? Thank you. Next up, item thirteen is the consideration of expansion of the no wake zone.
All righty, so this is a follow up from the July twelfth Board of Commissioners meeting where staff is asked to present a possible expansion of the marked no wakes zone areas within the town of Cape Carteret. Session law nineteen ninety-seven dash fifty states that it is unlawful to operate a vessel at greater than a no wake speed in the waters east of Route fifty-eight Bridge within the corporate limits of the town of Cape Carteret and the town's extraterritorial planning jurisdiction. Based on session law nineteen ninety-seven dash fifty, the town could mark no wake zone at the extent of the town's E T J, which would have to be in conformance with any applicable state or federal regulatory agencies, but they would allow to be marked. The town has received complaints from waterfront property owners in Old Cape Carteret about boat wake causing increased erosion of their shorelines and areas that are not currently marked as no wakes zones. The attached map provides an example of where additional no wakes zone markers could be placed to expand the marked no wakes zone in Cape Carteret. So the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to discuss expanding the marked no wakes zone area and to provide direction to town staff on how to proceed with this matter. And put up the screen now. It shows the area right here in orange is the existing marked no wakes zone. And then the area in red could be the potential no wakes zone. Right now, it's kind of tricky because the boat ramp launch at the end of Manatee Street is designated as a no wakes zone. This basin here at the end of Yopon Drive is also designated as a no wakes zone. And there's a no wakes zone that kind of hugs the shoreline through here. However, this area out here is not designated as no wake. A lot of the complaint about the awake is here on the quarter off Neptune Drive. So there's a couple of different options. You could move this buoy further out, add an additional buoy to this line right here. Or you could, if you wanted to designate this entire area through here, you could put buoys at each of those entry points. So there might this might be more of the compromise somewhere in here to sort of push it out to the end of that peninsula out there that that turn. Because a lot of people speed up going around that turn, and I think that generates a lot of the complaints. But just seeking direction from the Board of Commissioners on on how to proceed. And I think we've got, here's the map that was provided by the state. And this is that area I was talking about, Long Bog Sound, where it's no wakes zone for these areas. However, that's pretty hard to enforce. Because a lot of this is just where people's docks are there along Bog Sound. So this area in here is definitely a lot easier to enforce. This is a little less clear. If you're actually in the boat basin, it's probably more enforceable because you can see if somebody's creating wake. Out here, it's a little bit confusing how it hugs the shoreline, so just a consideration. But like I said, you could expand it around to this turn right here and maybe remedy some of the complaints that we're getting about the the wake that's created by boats. But just seeking direction from the board on on how the board would like to proceed on this, so.
Any comments, gentlemen, or suggestions?
N C Wildlife, Marine Fisheries, they all have jurisdiction in there to enforce it. Up until recently, I don't know that it was widely known that those were no wakes zones. We have brought that to their attention. And it could be enforceable by the police department. We don't have a boat, so would have to be enforceable by getting a hall number, tracking down that residence and all that. It's not necessarily feasible, but so we really have to rely on state enforcement efforts to enforce that no wakes zone.
Mr. Kane. Yes, I think. I don't know if this necessary all looks to me like. That area up there, up there, twenty-three years I've been here. Area that is a recreational area that's safe in a coastal waterway itself because you've got the barrier marked islands between there and the coastal. People use it not so often as years past, but the water ski out there, tube out there, it's a wide area. Shoreline from all along there is well established, well grassed. The erosion that spoken of down at Manatee Street happened in the northeast storm wasn't boats because the boats never go fast. I kind of like that idea that the buoy that's just right around the corner on that point. Boy. Quite where that buoy is.
So there, yeah, there's one.
If you moved that just around the corner, just moved it out so people could see it as they're coming in there because they come on the plane and they slow down. Probably three days a week, I see it all the time. And I think that would, since once you get in there, it's all no wakes zone. I think that'll slow them down a little bit ahead of time. They wouldn't be coming up on time and turning the corner with the red. Bring the movies on. So my my thoughts on if we do anything at all, move the buoy that's there just around the corners so that people could see it coming into the because you can't see it when you're out in that part till you actually get into the water.
I'd like to Mr. Kane, I'm not totally agree with what he just said. Been here all my life. I've actually learned how to water ski right there. And it's nice to see the families out there enjoying the area where they're not getting ran over out there in the coast. But I've been with Chris Kane, makes this area as well. First place to skate, please don't take the current. We placed like a buoy as a computer. Discuss the powerful solution of place that always check shoreline. So I'm not like basically all of.
One of the comments that I forgot. If you go from the point there, as you turn the corner there to the bridge, the island speed or no wakes speed, depending on the time, it's ten to fifteen minutes longer to get to the beach. There are a lot of time. Ferry Channel isn't no way except for. Only place it's it's no wake on Ferry Channel is when you get up close to them. Well, I agree with the no waves rule. God, in fact, it has slowed down the track considerably. About two or three days a week, and it's slowed down considerably. So it's been an effective program. And they they go up on planes as soon as they go by the no wake buoy on the ferry channel. I'm saying the area is on a king card just like that. And we'll be able to use that. It's always been used. I just feel like it's an overstep, Larry. Larry can do that. Go one of the new towns, do that.
Nineteen ninety-five, I built my first house in very big office. I'm the house of a big tall. And Hurricane Frank came along, Hurricane Burke. All these hurricanes are coming through. I started having bad erosion top of my house. Bugs, not a bunch to get in. It was the storm that caused the erosion. So what I had to do, I had to do with the seawall. Sometimes you go to the dead on property. Especially on property on that's water. I believe we need to be careful how we perceive of this. Because there's a lot of uncertainty toward areas as recreational areas. Now, I'm not saying there's nothing against the idea of dry crack. If I pray that in a pathway. But I think the area there being a no wakes zone is very sufficient area to cause to become a no wakes. But really better, that's a wide area.
One other point that that one buoy out there on reset, set farther up the channel, it could be set out farther where it was. Without their. Are you talking about putting it right on that corner? Yeah, right, right, right. But it was before it got cut loose. It was right about here and you could see it coming in from here. Now it's it's been moved up a little bit there. I'm saying either put one out here, an additional one, move this one up here right at the point. So people coming around the corner can see it ahead of time because they are the number of people that are now slowing down in there since we put those buoys out. Place a small line that we could do.
Yeah, I've noticed that since you put the new slow buoy at the mouth of Deer Creek, where the old one used to be before washed down the middle. And slowed down, people just don't know. And the channel markers have been too.
Yes.
And you know, maybe are the channel markers down on this. Is there?
Where they put channel markers right here, red and green. And there's another one set over here. There's a green over here, right about there. And then a no wake, no wake markers right about.
Would we have to have channel markers running all the way along?
Everybody knows. You know, there's some people that they're up there, but you you can tell that they don't know where they're going. They go over a noise bed. I'm probably the other stuff.
Does anyone want to make a motion? Give Zach some guidance on this. Okay.
If there's no motion, do you need a motion to?
Well, to put in the wait, the no wakes zone, I believe we do have to have a motion, right?
I'll make change.
To change, to make a change, is that correct?
Yeah, and I would say just because there's some disagreement on where the placement would be. I would say we definitely need to need a motion on that, so.
Okay, so even let's say we're like Commissioner King's talking about just moving the boom.
Yes, yeah, because then we need to notify Wildlife Resources and everything.
All right, so yes, we need a motion. That would be a separate. Yeah, that's a motion, yes.
Just for record, just for the record for the bunch.
The way it's set up there or some lesser amount?
Some lesser amount, but to encompass that shoreline. It it don't have to be as wide as what you show on the map, some no way.
So should that should we incorporate that in the motion then?
I don't know anything. Need to stay away. I am in a way. It passes that we can discuss.
All right, so Commissioner Martin made a motion to expand the wait, the no wakes. Is there a second? There is no second. Anyone like to make another motion, bring another action regarding the issue?
Motion. It's just relocated, the ones that. You know, one right there, you just move it up there. Then we don't have to buy another buoy and that'll same purpose as putting the new buoy there.
So my 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 question with doing that, is that still going to be technically in what is a designated no wakes zone where that buoy is going to be?
Can they actually save a whole area of this?
Well, where you're talking about where we're going to put the buoy, was that is that going to technically be in the no wakes zone? Or would we need to extend that no wakes zone to encompass where we want to put the buoy? I'm just I'm just thinking, governor.
If you put us a buoy at that point, it's obviously in a song that's not right.
Is that right? So that's that's where I guess the legal part of the where we're going to put the.
The buoy raised no what? Work sense is no way. You don't say approaching no wakes on process, no wakes. We're going to get into technicalities of the motion.
Okay, so I'm just I'm just thinking there again, I'm just trying to think.
For what its intended purpose was, going down Deer Creek, there was no way to tell if people could see it. They can't quite see it until they get to the car. I said, just put it backward of us and we'll be or closer where.
It wasn't. So where it was located, was that technically in the in the no wakes zone? In the no wakes zone?
Must have been if we put it there.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking, all clarification?
Just for clarification, the entire from the intercoastal waterway in and from fifty-eight east is all the wakes zone. Technically, per the state statute for the session law that was adopted. Now, what's enforceable is what is marked, and that's where that wording, expanding the marked no wakes zone. Because I mean, if it's not marked, you really can't enforce it. So that's what we're asking for is to delineate the extent of that marked area. And expand that area. So I think that's what we're trying to reach is what that expansion is.
Okay. Right.
So I think you could be, you know, this, I think this is the option everybody's discussed, you know, placing it there at that that corner. And then I think what Commissioner Martin was referencing was an area a little bit greater than that, that would encompass the entire shoreline through there. So kind of deciding one way or another. I think that's how the motion could be to go, we could say this is option A. In the expanded area, like Commissioner Martin was referencing, could be option B, so.
Yeah, I haven't asked for a second yet, so. We'll just leave it like it is.
I just, I just was asking a question because, yeah, I just.
I'm okay with it. It doesn't have to know exactly.
It shouldn't be, Mike, but we're doing.
If my understanding correctly, the area we're talking about is already designated no wakes zone, but it's only enforceable if the marker's right.
Yes, yeah, it has.
We're not changing where the no wakes zone is.
No, technically, the entire ETJ that's in the water from the intercoastal waterway in and from fifty-eight east. That's all considered no wakes zone, but what's enforceable is what's marked. So we're asking to delineate and expand that marked area.
If we move the marker, as Mr. King suggested, we're not expanding the no wakes zone. We're just expanding the area that's enforceable, which is already in a wakes zone. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, we're just expanding the enforcement area.
Now, it's like his motion. Okay, why have a, why have a. So the whole area is no way. So why not have a part that's no way enforceable though? That whole area is no way.
From a perspective of creating the statute. Section one, the entire area east of the Route fifty-eight bridge, which. You saw it on there. That is a no wakes zone. Section two provides broad discretion to the board to determine where the buoys lie though. So ultimately, it's up to you, y'all to decide where the buoys are, but the entire area is a no wakes zone.
I'm worried about putting that buoy down. Just like, well, just, well, even for that corner, oh. That would be determined by voters. That is the area.
Yeah.
Blue that out for the way out there to the end. Because then nobody in the larger school would use that recreation period that they've been using for fifty years. Well, according to to the one that the. Said, there's no way anyone. Hasn't anybody been out there where that's a no wakes zone? The only place they know where it's a no wakes zone is where the buoys are. Buoys made a huge difference in the area in there, slowing boats down. Obviously not. It would be a complaint on shore, not really. Okay, I mean, that's, that's what the.
All right, so there's. In the motion world, you made a motion and seconded, so let's, so now we need more discussion on that motion. If not, then we'll, I'll call for a vote all the way. All opposed? All right. No, but if you'd like to make a comment, I'm more than happy to let you do that. We're a small town. We should be able to do things like that.
Well, sometimes we do. It's some, I think that this one, fair public time. I'm just wondering if it was in our jurisdiction of the town. To, you know, put the no way buoy, then I think you did answer that then. So it's up to our discretion for the town that's concerned to put the buoy, no way buoys.
The enforceable part, yes.
Within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the town.
Okay.
Thank you and I for there again with this. That's why I wanted some clarity, you know, as far as what we're discussing, where we're headed there. All right. Next up is discussion of the flooding issues, eh?
All right, so what I put together is kind of a post-event summary for the flooding that we recently experienced. So this is just kind of running through synopsis of the storm event. We did one of these after June twenty twenty when we had that heavy rainfall. So here's a breakdown. We have our weather station up here at the Cape Codder Community Park, so it gives us a lot of good data. So the event rainfall total was ten point zero five inches and that occurred from seven thirty, seven thirty-one twenty twenty-one to eight four twenty twenty-one. And then also took a look at the peak rainfall intensity on August first. The peak intensity was three point one five inches per hour. And then on August fourth, at seven in the morning, the peak intensity was three point two five inches per hour. So this gives you a pretty good idea for the, how the intensity correlated to the amount of flooding that we saw. We were under a flash flood warning. Here's a screenshot of where it was running until five fifteen AM. It was later extended at ten fifteen AM by the National Weather Service. So I did have a substantial amount of rainfall and anytime we have that volume of rainfall here in Cape Codderet. We do tend to see a fair amount of flooding, especially when it falls so quickly. The difference between this storm and the storm that we had last June, the rainfall intensity last June was actually over seven inches per hour. So that was a pretty catastrophic amount of rainfall. So this is kind of about half of what we saw last June. So going around the different areas in town, over on Dolphin Street, this property that we see pretty frequently floods during these heavy rainfall events. At the bottom of these, I also showed the topographic map. And based on the color intensity, so if it's a red or an orange, that's a higher elevation. Yellow is a higher elevation and then you can see the greens and blues are lower elevation. So it gives you a good idea about where the water is going to pond and collect. And if there's not a catch base in there at those locations, then that water is just going to be, is going to have to infiltrate into the, into the ground. When the ground's very saturated, it's difficult for that water to infiltrate. So we just kind of have to rely on some incremental infiltration and evaporation. So sometimes if it's a multi-day event, that's a little bit tough for that water to, to infiltrate into the ground. On top of that, you have areas like over on Neptune Drive where the water table is very high. Where it might be six inches or a foot below the surface, so it's really difficult to achieve infiltration there. So there's another view of Neptune Drive. We see this pretty much, pretty frequently with their heavy rainfall events where the whole road is submerged. There's a couple of potential solutions there. Right here, but next to this house, you can see where there's a swell that leads out to the sound. However, the swell is not deep enough to get that water off of Neptune. It's not something that the town has an easement to, but maybe something to explore in the future. So just, you know, a couple of areas I'll point about as we go through of just some assessments of where we might in the future be able to work with the property owners to get something accomplished, to get the water out. Over here on Neptune Court, these were taken at seven AM and submitted by residents over on Neptune Court. So you can see, this would be the drain on the east side of the road. And this is the drain on the west side, so that, that floodwater did overtop both of those drains at that location. And then here's another shot facing south on Neptune Court. And then also some water that's coming off of some properties on the west side of Neptune Court. So here's a comparison between seven AM on Neptune Court and ten AM on Neptune Court. So a pretty substantial amount of that water drained out. Like I mentioned, we were under a flash flood warning, so this was kind of, you know, consistent with what we'd expect during a flash flood. Where there was a substantial amount of water that was all to our drainage system at once. And it did a fairly good job of getting the water out of there. There are some issues with the boxes there that they need to be reset. They've shifted over time and settled. And that's something that we've been working on with Pub Works Department. We took a look at and have to get a plan together of how we're going to tackle that. The good news is there is flow in the system and there is discharge through the whole system. So here's another view facing north on Neptune Court, seven AM there on the left. And ten AM there on the right, so you can see where most of that water did drain out of there. Then this is the discharge coming off Neptune Court. So we do have good flow through those pipes, but there is some stuff with the boxes there that we need to reset those at some point in the future. The good news is that that was a substantial amount of water and it did move out of there fairly quickly from seven AM to ten AM. So here's a overview of the topographic. You can see that the street is the lowest point, as well as some of the areas between these properties that heads out to the sound. So all this being high ground around Neptune Court, a lot of that dumps into this area and sits on the street until it can either infiltrate or flow out to the sound. Going over to Sutton Drive, this was over on the fairway. So you can see about the extent, you can see the rack line of how high the water got. This was not as bad as it was last June, but there still was a good amount of water that was back there. And by this point, this is probably around eleven or so, we were over there and a lot of that water had started to go down. This is a view facing to, to the north. Where it collected on the fairway and also collected behind some of the houses there off of Sutton. So this is off of Sutton Place. It's a low spot that's in here and where a lot of the water collects. And then this is the discharge off of Sutton. So that's coming out to Pettifer Creek, so had really good flow for that pipe as well. Here's some of the topographic maps. It shows, I find these maps really helpful because they show the elevation with the heat map. So you can see this low area starting at Sutton Place. Coming out onto the fairway is all substantially lower than the surrounding topography. If you zoom in a little bit, you can see the earthen dam there that's across the fairway that holds a lot of that, a lot of that water back. And that was something that we've worked with John Freshwater to design a grassy swell to go across the fairway. That would alleviate in these extreme flood conditions and allow that water to pass through and head to the north Pettifer Creek. But that is located on the golf courses property, so that is a little bit of an obstacle. I know in recent conversations with Star Hill Golf Course over the weekend, it did sound like that they were more open to working towards a solution. So hopefully we can keep some of that momentum and working out a solution to get this taken care of. But, you know, part of this is that we do have topography working against us. Some of these properties, they have an elevation in their backyards of around eighteen feet. You can see some of the surrounding topography goes up to twenty-four and some places twenty-six feet. So have a pretty substantial difference in what's out there on the fairway versus what these properties are sitting at. A swell is going to alleviate the worst of the worst flooding and get that water out of there. There could still be some ponding that would be in the backyards of a couple of inches. But it just might not be possible to drain those out unless you put a catch basin in each of those backyards. So that would just be one consideration, but I think the swell would alleviate the severe flooding events and allow most of that water to exit in conjunction with that pipe that already leads under the golf course. And here's another view here, kind of showing like out there on the fairway, got an elevation of twenty-six feet. And then over here, just right next to Sutton Place, there's some elevations of up to thirty-six feet. So you're going from a thirty-six foot elevation down to an eighteen, so it's kind of understandable why that water all collects in there. It's acting as a giant bowl to catch that water. So I think, you know, you look out here on the golf course, you can see an eighteen and an eighteen there in the middle is where that earthen dam is. So basically, if, if we had been able to continue the dig we were doing last year in, in June, I think we could have probably remedied this. But obviously, we need the cooperation from the golf course and I think we're moving forward in the right direction on that based off the recent email communications. Headed over to Quailwood Circle. Got an area in here as well that, you know, there's a lot of high ground behind this property and all kind of empties out into this. There's potential, maybe a ditch could be extended there along the northern right of way on Quailwood Circle and tie into the existing network of pipes there. And over on Bob White Circle, all Bob White Circles emptying into this, this drainage ditch that's next to the house. But it's not tied into this main ditch that's back here. You can kind of see it running parallel to Quailwood Court. We need to find a way to tie it into that drainage system because that's a pretty well-defined drainage feature there. And then we have the one that crosses Quailwood Court as well. So ideally, if we could find a way to tie this in, as well as this area over here, we can get that water out of there as well. Might have to get some easements and get some cooperation from property owners, but I think there's a relatively easy fix at those locations as well. So then over to Anita Fort Drive, area that we see a lot of ponding during these rainfall events between Lemelinda Court and Anita Fort. So you can see that's the low spot. They're actually at an elevation of eighteen and then surrounding topographies at twenty. And then twenty-two and then up to twenty-four there on that corner. So a lot of that just empties in there. That might be a little bit more complex to figure out how we can get that to some of the town's drainage, but just one of the areas that we're looking at as well. Want to give a brief update for where we are in the North Carolina Coastal Resiliency Grant Program. We're working with Dewberry. We've identified these locations, had some extensive conversations with them. You know, it's something that, that they're going to be working on on their end. They're waiting on the state to sign the contract. So they can move forward on actually doing some of the engineering and design and analysis of these different locations. But the good news is that we do have, I think, a good qualified consultant working on that. It's being paid for by the state grant of funding, so that's ideal as well. And our goal is to get some shovel-ready projects that come at the end of that process. So in phase one and two, that's where we're developing the different shovel-ready projects. Phase three and four are actually securing the funding to put some of these things in place. So pretty good opportunity. I hope that the state will sign off on the contract soon so they can move forward. But we have had some active discussions, gone through all the flooding areas in town, so they are aware of that. It's a really good opportunity to have somebody in here and do a complete analysis where our water flows, where ponds, and where some strategic improvements would really have the biggest, best outcome for the residents. So that's kind of the synopsis of where this, this past event. I know Commissioner King had asked, have a couple of documents and the video and all that stuff from Sutton Drive. So I could pull that stuff up when needed, but I think it's pretty helpful to look at the topographic map. Gives you an idea for where we can anticipate flooding. I know that'll be an important part when Dewberry is doing their analysis, is looking at the topographic map. And then seeing what features are connected and what features are disconnected. So a lot of this is playing catch-up where there's no stormwater infrastructure that exists currently and trying to figure out how to get that stormwater infrastructure in place. But I think a combination of the findings that Dewberry will reach, hopefully putting together some shovel-ready projects and securing state funding for those projects. And then some of the stuff that we can do in-house with the Pub Works Department, I think we should be able to tackle some of these issues. I know we'd all wish that this process would move a little bit quicker. But the good news is we are moving in the right direction and that's something I'm, I'm happy to report is we've made more progress in the last couple of years on this issue than have been made in quite some time. So we are moving in the right direction. I hope that we can get it all the way to fruition and installation and get some stormwater systems put in, so.
In case anybody wanted, that's my house. So I know all about it and I've been pumping for the last several days. You go up my backyard and I get it pumped down. And then because the water level is up so much now, when I go home, I have to pump again because it'll all be still soaking in. And I would just like a safety sort of statement out here when I see kids playing in the stormwater. Please don't let your kids go out playing that stuff. Because down here on the coast, especially with the septic systems, and when that water's coming up, it's getting in those drain fields. And that's leaching into that stormwater, so you're actually letting your kids play in, in sewage. So unless they've got some really good, you know, hepatitis shots updated, you know, I know I was a kid, we used to play and stuff like that. I think this gave us such a resilient. Deficiencies, I guess, I don't know. But anyway, this is, this has been an issue. And like I say, my neighbors and myself, we put in our own pump station. But I have to pump to the pump station because it's like this. So we got a lot of issues and there again, I really feel for people in Sutton Drive, this town board in February, as the document showed, made because. This town board in February, as the document showed, made because there was issues because we don't have an easement across that fairway. But we're like, we don't care. We want to help, we want to get done, please, let's do that. And so finally, here we are, almost a year later, and we're finally getting some response back. So hopefully, we'll get something done. And I've also reached out to our federal representatives regarding this rescue plan. Because it's been pulling teeth, trying to get information, what we can spend this money on. I like to spend it on some of these projects. So the wording is, I got contacted Commissioner Murphy's office, Commissioner Tillis, excuse me, Senator Tillis and Senator Burr's office. And I did get a nice response back from Ben Ball, who represents Congressman Murphy. And the way he's saying is, it does say sewer. So I guess if we put storm in front of that, we're good to go. But I was just want to get some clarifications, you know, so we go out and we do spend some money. Next thing, oh, there's a technicality, we meant, you know, sanitary sewer. So it's little things like that that just really frustrate the ever living, you know, lot of me. But it's getting a lot of attention down here now. Last week, the Department of Environmental Quality was talking about its coastal habitat protection plan. And that includes a lot of this with the stormwater. We're way behind here, back in the middle of the state. They have what's called the phase two stormwater where towns were obligated to tackle these issues. It wasn't a request. You had to have, you know, everything, there were six elements to that plan down here because of Cameron and all the other entities. It sort of got pushed to the side. But regardless of what these things say, we're better than that. I think we should be doing what we can and thank you, Zach, for all the work you're doing to try to get us to money to do this. Because that's what it comes down to, money. Moving forward, this board or the next board, whoever, will have to look at maybe adopting a stormwater fee to pay for this going forward to look at these costs. Mr. King?
Yeah. I'll make a couple comments. I'll give you a camera and a telephone map, we're gonna run that. If you show them the pictures that I just had to go, you can see exactly. It's gonna be helpful. You have that film that you shot?
Yeah.
So show the picture of the burn.
Yeah, I'll start off, I have this up there now. The, this was the nineteen seventies aerial. And this is going across the fairway and I don't know if everybody's had the opportunity to see this or not. This was something in our research that we found is that there used to be a swell that went across the fairway back in the seventies. And it was also there in the nineteen eighties as well. And then at some point after that, looks like it was there maybe in ninety-eight and then in two thousand and four, it was gone. So at some point, the golf course decided to pipe that swell and convert it from an open swell, which I think cut down a lot of the capacity on that pipe. And then there's also some issues with that pipe actually flowing uphill first before it has fall. And that's all within the golf courses fairway. So these are just some of the things I think are important to point out and just to share with everybody so they can see. Because I mean, a picture's worth a thousand words when you had a functioning stormwater swell that was there before and it was removed. And we're starting to see these issues, I think it's important to kind of share that with everybody. And I'll pull up this pictures as well.
And that was the biggest issue with that flooding last year was the pipe had a blockage going underneath. And that's what caused the more exacerbated.
One point on that, that piping velocity and that piping so low. That what's happening is, show that picture for everybody to know exactly what you're talking about. Shows the swell where you're looking down, where it's a pond. There, that one right there. You see the earthen burn there and the lower left-hand corner of that water? Well, that big pond there, which even gets bigger as it did in two thousand and twenty, flushed all those four houses down. Can't get across that. Piping system that's in there right now is very slow velocity. It handles one, one and a half, two inches of rain pretty well. It'll get out of there. And once that water gets to the concrete box at the north side of the fairway, it goes to Pettifer Creek really fast. Jack, Zach showed that picture where the water was coming out of the discharge of the pipe. So the problem isn't from the north side of the fairway. It's all this water is running down the fairway. There's roughly four acres of fairway flooding, two acres of building blocks and an acre of road. So flowing down there, but it can't get back up. And I agree with what Zach said, if you well-engineered burn, take that burn out, well-engineered swell. That goes far to the south side of the golf courses as you possibly can to get all that water so it doesn't have to go through the pipes. I think that would, I think that would greatly alleviate it. If you look at the discharge from the easement pipe, it runs off by Mrs. Gerganus's house, that easement pipe. That has got one foot of elevation compared to the pipe on the north side of the fairway. So you've got, you've got a foot to work with. You may have to redo that box on the north side to have it elevated at a different elevation when we not get the velocity that you need if you put it. But you got two choices. You can, I would start with a swell to get that water out of there and see how much of it you can get out of there. And if that doesn't, if that doesn't resolve the problem, I think it has a good chance. You'd have to put a straight pipe. Ordinance one fifty-six oh twenty-eight is our stormwater and our stormwater ordinance. Property owners are not allowed to discharge one property to a neighbor's property. So I think this is one of the things, one of the areas in the town that we need to get on, right? Get some accountability, Gulf Coast, who never come to the meeting, not spoken to anybody, step forward to be part of the solution.
Any comments, Jim? Go ahead.
Sorry, can I just add that back before they covered this up, there was minimal flooding. From the homeowners that lived to my left and right. Yeah, there wasn't, there wasn't a major flooding problem until it was closed. And that was probably done about the time that my house was built. Because they closed, I didn't know that there was underground spring in the middle of my property that they closed, covered. And then they built that ditch around the other side and the easement comes down the other side. It's covered all up.
Could Mike give me that? More, as he said, so what is the number of that? The purple word on the picture.
If you don't try to remember, I actually have fifty-six point zero two eight.
Did you actually have something on the books?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
What's that?
How from your left to burn the water, the freezing monster.
Good question, Tom. If you look at many of the streets, lying closed, the, that storm that we're just talking about on August first. It was that part of going through my garage, drive, most of the roads, you put in a road, any kind of housing development. You cut the ditch deeper, not put that bill on top of the road, so that the road will grant the ditch. That ditch can hold a nominal amount of water. You know, but you're like, fill the property, you know, so high, it's running. Well, what I'm saying is, did I start up the whole of our town? Well, yeah, but that's a civil issue. You know, if you have the books.
If you have it on the books, say, and earthwork will have. You have, then you should be forced. I don't know.
Any other comments?
I'm glad you're mine, you're awesome. Every time. I will say. All of them, sure. Thanks, Zach. Once you said. Identify the areas of problem. Either the town, as I said, for the national responsibility. Or a solution. Fun repairs, so, but until we identify all those five steps. Just eighteen fifty-nine or whatever the sales was. Oh, it's enough. I think everyone reminds that, that fire department chief off the wall last time. He's like, stop them, stop them.
Yeah, that's something they said they don't do any longer, but if we know anybody on the highway.
Most of them, remember, if they want to go for that problem, it isn't easy. None of the right management, we're more frequent, please, you know, bear it on him. Say that, yeah, we live in the. South Beach and that's gonna happen, I'm gonna do about it, that's all. We'll see some ditch, it's like. I'd like to see. Zach, and I know you've been there, but I'm not, not a pinpoint, but I would like to see what is to all the areas that are wrong. For their town's responsibility. Once the water gets to the right one, I feel like it's town's responsibility. So, that's all I can say.
No comments?
Well, with regard to the ordinance, the ordinance gives a mechanism. But this particular case, the town is offended as one property owner to another. Plus, I don't know that we have a stake in this. But what I would like to say is to bring the people to the table to finally resolve. I sat on this board in one capacity or another for twenty-two years, okay? And this is not the first time I've heard about this.
I've talked to you for twenty years.
I don't know, it's the town's responsibility to implement a solution, but I think it's the town that possibly sees a solution.
They're covering the ditches and they're building their property. They're burning water too deep. And you're allowing them to cover the ditches. And when you do that, or they're covering and putting small points in. And it doesn't, just like you were, you were discussing, it's just a little bit about the problems. Exactly what they're doing. And I hear they can't discuss it about one thing, not the whole town.
Well, quite frankly, I'd say something the other town, agree with all the things you showed it, but the one, where is my mind, one pin here? The type in here, I heard flooded four times, my turn here is one up. So the light actually runs in the light where it actually runs off the course, four acres of golf course sheets, sounds about.
Maybe more comments?
All the areas of flooding happens in my.
Yeah, I think we've got a really good handle on those. I mean, the ones we ran through today, there's a couple of locations in addition to that. But that's what we're working with Dewberry on is to not only just identify those, but then to create some actual plans that are engineered and designed to fix those problems. And then we tackle the issue of funding, responsibility, everything else. I mean, we've got, you know, a state grant to engineer and design solutions. You know, we can visit that down the road about who's responsible, who's gonna pay and whatnot. Ideally, hopefully, there's gonna be some state funding that comes along in phase three and four of that. But that's exactly what we're working with a consultant on right now. I think that the final list that we have that comes out of that, I think is gonna be really helpful to all these areas we've discussed this evening. But and there's a couple of other areas that, you know, we know throughout town that are problem areas. But that's what we're working on right now with Dewberry and that was the purpose of that grant. So like I said, I think we're making good progress. And, you know, to analyze what we have, you know, analyze the areas that we have the flooding issues and then come up with a solution to address those. And then work through how do we fund those, you know, that's, that's the next step in that. Ideally, hopefully, there are some state funds that come along for resiliency. And, you know, all these areas are threatened during hurricanes and increasingly so almost annually with these heavy rainfall events. So that's, that's the purpose of that coastal resiliency grant is to tackle, identify those areas and then identify solutions. And provide engineered solutions that we can work off of. So I think we're making a lot of progress on that end. I mean, from the staff standpoint, I mean, we've got a good handle on, on every one of these areas. You know, we could tell you, run down every area in town if we need to and we've seen it flood and we know how much it floods and what causes it. And what, you know, rainfall threshold pushes us into that flooding, so.
Well, yeah, we want to prioritize, the face of our time, spirit issue, the areas, our crap. And with prioritizing, I don't, I hate to see this, I'm the new commissioner of the block here. See. This kid down the road. We need a license, this expedited, possible. I know there's only so much we can do. But if we could stay on top of it very carefully, then we could sort of get things moved forward, moving, moving forward to get these, these areas helped. Whether it's, you know, I don't want to sit up here, none of these sit up here at the start point. We all need to come to the table. They all come to the table and discuss this. And move forward, if it's getting to start here or let's get them, let's get them to the table. Let's get some of those other areas of the state, let's get the guys to the table, talk about it. Let's see what we can do to get, get moved forward to people Sutton Drive, the Fort Drive, Neptune, so, the whole areas. This is all important to everybody. Sitting out there, none of that, I do care about what's going on. Everybody cares about. But we're having to worry about money. Does the town have the money out there in trouble fixing all this? We do not. The state does have some money going out, maybe we can get some of this money coming. So when you go out there, we get stuff done. But we all can, up here, can't just buy ourselves, we gotta have everybody's.
Yeah, I think there's, and I think there's a lot of opportunity too, if, as the mayor mentioned, if we're able to get some of that American Rescue Plan funding. With this infrastructure bill that's, that's up there in DC now. I mean, if they'll allow us to use it on these types of things, the timing could be great if we come out with some shovel-ready plans to fix some of these areas. And the funding's there for the federal level. I mean, that would be best case scenario and we can really tackle some of these. You know, if that doesn't end up lining up, then we're gonna have to do, you know, some prioritization and figure out how we're gonna pay for some of these things. And that, that's the biggest challenge, that and figure out, you know, what our willingness is to take easements in these areas, you know, to take control over these. Whether it's a temporary construction easement to put it in and then hand it back over or whether we're wanting permanent easements. So we control the entire system. And that's part of the issue there on the Sutton Drive is we control half the system and not the entire system. And that's a difficult position to be in because when there's a block halfway down the system, we don't have any control of how to resolve that. So just a lot of things to kind of weigh in on. And when we say want to fix these things, you know, what does that mean in terms of do we secure easements to be able to go in there and maintain them? You know, clean them out if they're open ditches, go in and mow them, clear them from obstructions. And the past, the town got into a lot of these ditches behind properties and things and there, there were not easements there. And that's, you know, I know people got used to seeing the town go back there and, you know, twenty, thirty years ago. And it's just not something that we have the legal authority to do. You know, something goes wrong in there, somebody gets hurt, something's not done correctly, there's a lot that goes into that. So that's part of the bigger discussion, I think, in terms of, you know, what we want to take on and identify those areas that we do want to take on. And hopefully, that's something that comes out of the Dewberry study and analysis of this is where, you know, what easements we could strategically take control of. And, you know, have the biggest, you know, best out, outcome from that. That's gonna benefit the property owners and address the flooding issues. So I think we're making good progress on that. You know, that's supposed to be wrapped up by the end of the year on that project. I think they're a little bit behind on it, but, you know, the good news is that we are moving in the right direction. And I think that's a good opportunity to bring folks to the table to identify these areas and talk about what could be done and have some of those discussions as we move forward, so.
Tom, do you have any comments?
So I can add, I mean, the worst thing to do, some of these small spots, if they're not going to be interested. Such as someone put a driveway in, raising the driveway of the color black, I see it all the time. My apartment's back to stop fishing, because my neighbor did that. My apartment's back to stop fishing, because my neighbor did that. It's all over town. That's something we can do without an engineer status, set the process, clean, clean the ditch out. Of the work to start. You know, about a few of the sposting, doing that, simple things like help shovel pulls the dirt here and there, whatever. It's so that people see that we're actually doing so.
Yeah, and I will say, you know, our, our public works department's done a tremendous job over the last couple of months. Um, we really have a great team in place now that'll go out and, and tackle these spots. They tackled the ditch along Holly, Holly Lane, um, on Yopon Drive, so they're really, um, they're kind of playing catch-up for a lot of years that, that is haven't necessarily been addressed, so we do have some catch-up to do, but I, I'm grateful for the team that we have in place because they're getting a lot done, and that's gonna make a huge difference, um, over time, once we're able to address all those ditches that are in the right way, or at least taking a good step in the right direction and getting caught up, so. Yeah, I think that's something, Ryan, kinda have a list of which ditches have been attended to and, and addressed each month, so.
I agree with what Christian Mark said. We need to do what we can as far as our public works, but our public works aren't being able to fix all that. We need, we still need to do what we can, but we also need to be pursuing the engineering studies. I mean, the, the five of us can sit up here and look at water and say, yeah, let's dig a ditch here, you know, but that, that's not fixing the problem. I mean, we're gonna have to look at funding for the engineering, for the bigger problems, you know, taken care of, but our public works needs to be doing what they can. Some, some of these small problems probably could be taken care of, just by clearing out ditches, things like that.
All right. Next, that's you is, uh, excuse me. So, yeah.
I mean, very good. I think both of those, the relative issues in this city. To see all this information and doing this, my. Probably about, you know, some pictures of that, always move this area nineteen seventy, nineteen eighty, ninety, whatever. That time, probably engineering gets a little bit, but it's like that, in that time. Like what my said, chefs don't, it isn't. People who is here, the topic may wait to fifteen, sixty years, you can, and listening there, you're not just, I'm like, I'm divided. I cannot choose one year, four, ten years, or something like that. I know more people than many of the fifty or seventy, seventy in this area, because I worked all my team, check out, there's that hill, and then I'll die. And I see that, I was like, I'm not. Forty years, I had that print. Beyond, uh, oh, some motherhood, that is built to be trust, see all this picture of how it's looks this area. You cannot blame somebody who drew this, in this, star hill. Well. We are changed to handle that. That's what I talk with the one of this you got. We have something I call with previous, uh, we. Get about it. We not need it. Priority, but what did the people? I'm from the province, but obviously. Not something what's a belonging and we're gonna do this, do that, get that. And that could. Put the people on table together. Whoever, I don't care for the last name, first name or second name or anything, maybe we know this is. Or forget it, not like, yeah, we wanna blame the, 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 the. I've ordered them this town. I've ordered them this.
Thank you, Sivia. Thank you all for, for your opinions, and like I say, we're a small town, we should be able to, to listen to those opinions. And naturally, we're gonna be keeping up with this going forward, and hopefully we'll, there again, we'll get there one day.
Well, man, I'm just worried about that.
Yes. Thanks. All right, so next up is discussion to allow town manager determine no parking areas and authority to waive fees, penalties, et cetera.
Yep, so this was just asking for some direction and, and to see if there's interest from the board and allowing either myself or a combination of myself and the chief of police to waive fees, penalties, and to designate the location of no parking areas in town. Uh, one of the issues we've run into now, if a penalty or a citation's kind of issued in air, or if it's something, a good example would be a new resident moves to town, they don't know that they need a parking pass to park at one of our parks, and they get a ticket. Um, they come right in here to, to pay the ticket or whatever, to get a, and to get a pass. Uh, right now, we don't have any authority to waive any of those circumstances, which is unfortunate from, you know, a customer service standpoint, from a citizen service standpoint, so I really would like to see us have some level of authority to be able to waive fees and penalties in those circumstances. Sometimes, you know, there's a misunderstanding if there's a violation that's sent, um, for like a violation of the zoning ordinance. Um, so there's a number of situations that arise throughout the year, uh, that it would be nice to be able to waive these fees and penalties in those circumstances, and then also to be able to designate some of these no parking areas um, in conjunction with the chief of police when we identify areas as being an issue, uh, rather than having to wait for the next board meeting to come, bring it back to the board, have it officially, uh, designated. So uh, that was something I talked to Commissioner Waters about, um, it just something we wanted to pull on the agenda just to see if there was interest and staff drafting a text amendment to bring to the future meeting to address that. Um, it would definitely help from a customer service standpoint and a citizen service standpoint of, uh, you know, making it so that we have some, some grace and understanding when people come in and they truly didn't know what the ordinance was, or they didn't know that they had to go get a parking sticker or reentry sticker to park at the parks. Um, I think it's something that's, uh, long overdue for somebody to have that authority here, um, to address the circumstances when they arise. So just would ask the board for direction if that's something the board would like me to bring back at the board commissioners meeting next month.
Yep.
Mr. Mark. No, he's asking to, to bring back like a text amendment with the facts and all of it. I'll be laid out. So if you're okay with the, the principle.
So what we will discuss?
Well, if there's, I just wanna make sure before I draft the text amendment, you know, that you want me to encompass all these areas in the text amendment. Just wanted some clarification on that, so I know how to draft that text amendment to bring it back. Uh, that's a little more efficient than just kind of taking a general stab at it and, and that not being what everybody has in mind, so.
Do you need a consensus? Do we need a? All right. Is there a motion to?
The only comment I have. Like necessary, but also gives, uh, authority to two people to do whatever they want with tickets, things like that. For example, uh, I wouldn't expect that somebody last thing devoted down there would be given a free one, but you do have the authority to do that for this thing. So be careful with work. I think that's a necessary thing.
All right, so is there a motion to, to all the staff to just look at presenting a text amendment?
Pretty much any consensus.
Uh, if there's consensus among all the commissioners, I think then, you know.
Text, right?
You're asking for the board to agree, like, our responsibility to place them before, just like the four areas.
Yeah, I'd say it's my, myself and the chief of police, and then that way, when we have areas that pop up as issues, we don't have to wait till the next board commissioners meeting to, to put this science in. I mean, yeah, I think that's part of the town manager and chief of police position is to, you know, that we have common sense enough to identify those areas and have to take appropriate action, um, and not delay that further than it needs to be. Um, same thing with waiving fees and penalties and everything, it's, it takes common sense and, you know, it's, uh, you know, there, there are certain situ- situations where, you know, that's appropriate, there's other situations where it's not, so just using that discretion appropriately.
So can I just, we're just getting a consensus to have him present us with the, right? Is that good, everybody? All right, so bring us something next month, so.
Okay, do you want me to admit the no parking or include the?
Well, do two, do two, that way they can make a decision on it.
Okay.
And, uh, talk about it later in more depth, because there might be a situation or something we can be more specific in saying that you got the, let's say, uh, like he's saying to make wholesale, uh, decision regarding that, or you can maybe say in certain circumstances, you could have that authority.
Or concurrent with that.
Right, right, so, you know, there again, you look at all that, have, have fun with that.
Yeah, it could be, they could just be seeking consensus when we.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you, Zach.
All right.
Uh, next up is an item I added to the agenda, which is ILA appointments. Uh, as of July, uh, I guess I, I went to the bathroom at the wrong time, I was like the chair of that board. So because I'm the chair, I cannot represent, so for the year that I am the chair, we have to have a representative, uh, for the town in my stead on the ILX. We need to pick somebody for that. I would prefer to be one of the, one of you guys. All right, so we need to vote on that, though, so Jeff is volunteer. Um, let's have actually a motion for Jeff to be on the aisle at war. I'll make it, have a second. Jeff, any discussion? All in favor? Congratulations, Jeff. At the end of the year, I'll just step down and you can keep going. That's very important as an ILA, so that's, that's all about our power. And any decisions they make affect our pocketbooks, so I wanna make sure the town's very represented in that aspect. Uh, next up is commissioner reports. I neglect to send this around, I wanna do this for the, for the comments, everybody. Be a decent start, Commissioner Mark, from your comments.
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, uh, tell Ryan that the fence is looking really good down at the Perry Lane and Park, I'd say it's good and straight, nice, looks good. Anxious to get that park open for the people, people to use. I think it's gonna be a nice, nice, uh, facility. And I wanted to thank the town staff for their condolences, beautiful flowers you sent to my mother, uh, funeral yesterday. Thank you so much.
Just, uh.
Yes, sir.
Just my, my comment, uh, I think we talked stormwater for the, uh, first time I saw many of the drop-in the box, this is edged out so that the water could flow in there, and the ditch is opened up in many places in town, so. See here, there he is, yeah, Ryan. Uh, that's the first time I've seen that since I've been here. Thank you. So I have.
I was congratulating staff, y'all doing a great job. Thank y'all for what you need to do.
Also, just want to, uh, thank the staff for everything that they have done for past year and a half due to pandemic and, uh, keep it holding this town together and, uh, you know, let's not, not all forget, I mean, we talked about hurricanes tonight, we're getting ready to be in the season, and, uh, so everybody be prepared.
Nothing to report.
Uh, just have to echo what a great job staff does. I try to walk around pretty much this town every single day, and I see, I see the staff working, and they're, they're not parked somewhere like you see traditionally in bigger towns where, you know, the news crew is there and they're watching them sleep and take a break. These guys are working, and you're working hard. And here again, we have a very small staff for our small town, so they're doing a great job. And I just can't say enough about it, and our police force as well. They, these are some, there again, tough decisions we gotta look at going forward, not just these issues, but how we're gonna pay for this stuff going forward. And I'm hoping that, that we can get some, uh, some better direction, solidify it on, on some of this rescue plan money we're getting, because we need to upgrade so much our police department, you know, the communications and the equipment, things like that, and be looking at what we're paying them. That's, that's another issue going forward is not everybody's jumping up and down to wanna be a police officer anymore, and we're losing officers for higher-paying places, so we've gotta be competitive, and these are things that, even though we're a small town, if we're gonna have a police force, we need to do it right, or don't do it at all. That's just how I look at it. And just like everything we do here, we need to do it right, or don't do it at all. So, uh, I hope this board will support any efforts we can to try to upgrade everything we have within the police department with the monies that we can acquire and be thinking down the road how we're gonna pay for this. That's, that's the two most perpetual things we have in this town that will always be something we have to attend to, and that's our stormwater, our police force, and our streets and our roads. This is the three biggest things, and, and please don't take this as a slight, but thank goodness, that's the biggest things we have in our town, to be a small town, and these are things we can, we can do. So, and unfortunately, it's gonna be money, but if we, if we're smart about this thing and we can get the grants, and once again, can't thank Zach enough for his reaching out, and it's, it's tremendous, a lot of, a lot of paperwork, a lot of footwork that goes involved with this grant stuff. I'm, I'm doing it myself, trying to do what I can and reaching out, uh, to help Zach with, with some of this, uh, as far as the, uh, reaching out to the federal representation and stuff like that to get the guidance we can so we can spend this money and, and get money, uh, to help our little town, because our demographic is, is not good when it comes to a lot of grant work, because we're, uh, we're, we are small and we're, we're too rich in their eyes. And so, a lot of people just don't see it the way we do, unfortunately, but here again, our job is to look out not just for right now, but this next generation coming and try to set things in place, and thank you, board. I think this board's done a great job just since I've been here, especially through a pandemic. You know, and we've been, you know, strangled with a lot of the ways we can communicate, and, and hopefully here again, we're gonna upgrade some of your communications here, because going forward, this may be the future. We don't know what's gonna happen, uh, with this, with this virus, and what, what the next step's gonna be if we're going to lockdown again, but I, I'm, I'm gonna be optimistic and hopefully that we're gonna get ahead of all this, and, and I love my town, I love you people, and we just gotta look out for each other in the long run. And when together, we can do it. And thank you, gentlemen, thank you, staff, and thank you, people, those of you who showed up today. I, I do appreciate it. There you go, so, so, so Sivia, if you wanna start the Cape Cod donation fund, just bring your wallet right here, sir. Thank you, and thank you all. Once again, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, thank you, gentlemen, all in favor. Thank you, y'all, please do have a wonderful evening, rest of the week.